I call this meeting to Williamsburg James City County School Board to order 2.02 Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Larson?
Thank you. Mrs. Phyllis Dorsey, the principal of Clara Bird Baker is going to introduce the student who is going to lead our pledge this evening. Mrs. Dorsey. And thank you to the student, by the way.
Hello, this is Thomas Bartlett. He's a fourth grader at Clara Bird Baker Elementary School. Thomas enjoys reading, math, and social studies. And in his free time, he enjoys playing baseball, basketball, and football. Alright? Everyone please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Well spoken. Into the microphone. Appreciate that. 2.03, Ms. Serza, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Here.
Ms. Emanuel?
Here.
Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here. We do not need to certify the closed session because we have not done it yet, so we will do that after the end of the meeting when we go into a closed session for personnel. Public comment on proposed capital improvement plan. Ms. Serza, do we have any speaker cards for the CIP?
I do not.
We do now. Do you have a spiel?
I don't think you need that.
Okay. Yeah, but still three minute time in the ring.
Yes, I hope we did.
Okay, that's okay.
At this point in the public hearing, citizens are invited to address the school board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted a speaker card to the clerk prior to the start of the meeting. When a speaker's name is called, the speaker comes to the podium and states his or her name for the record and directs his or her comments to the chair of the board. In order to promote a listening and respectful environment, please avoid applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstration when the speaker is addressing the school board. Personnel matters doesn't apply for the public hearing here, so we will not hear those. The school board's role is just to listen to the speaker rather than to respond to his or her comments. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to make his or her comments. The school board asks each speaker to respect the time limitation. Time may not be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Somebody wants to speak on the Lafayette High School CIP needs?
So there's no, there's no name on the card, so...
I apologize for that. I think I pulled out two of them. I'll be corrected. Sorry, this is, I'm a novice. Hello, I'm Kathy Woolam. On behalf of the Lafayette High School Athletic Boosters, I respectfully request that this board actively considers the existing needs of Lafayette High School related to our capital improvement needs, namely, our current lack, ongoing lack of an auxiliary gym, and the related need to bus our students elsewhere. James Blair serves as our auxiliary gym, and that has impact on our class effectiveness, our sports practice times, and the ability of our students to get to practice. I also request that you will consider our ongoing need for a bridge walkway to Wisk to ensure a safe travel for our student athletes from our fields to Wisk. In addition, we do not have lit practice fields at Lafayette High School. So as discussions around lighting continue, we at the Lafayette High School Athletic Boosters respectfully request that the existing need for Lafayette lighting is part of the equation. And last but not least, theater. We do not have adequate space for our theater group as our space has been used for other purposes, and that is an existing need. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers we should discuss the CIP? Okay, we will move into the regular meeting of the school board. 5.01 approval of the agenda. Mrs. Cook?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I move approval of the agenda with the following modification, removing, removing from the consent agenda the personnel actions, and then moving the certification of closed session, moving that to the end of the agenda as well as the certification of closed session.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Is there a second?
Second.
We had, we had scheduled a personnel session prior to the regular meeting, and we were not able to get to that, so we will, after the end of the, of the agenda, remaining agenda, we will go into closed session and we'll come out and certify, vote on the personnel actions and certify at that point. Any further discussion on the agenda?
Other than that's going to be 12 point, what's the number going to be now for both of those?
Just so I know where... Probably 15.
No.
No. 13.5. Right after upcoming meetings. We'll move personnel closed session there. And 13 point, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Certification.
15. Any other discussion, Mr. Fuentes?
No, I just wasn't sure where we were.
Any other discussion?
Where we're going to go.
Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes?
Hi.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. 6.01 announcement superintendent's report. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The Berkeley Middle School Theater team won gold at the Virginia Theater Association Middle School Theater Competition recently. This is Berkeley Middle's sixth year in a row to be awarded the gold award. Rory Meadows was honored as best actress. Only three awarded in the festival. And Carlos Guerra and Addie Lawrence were awarded All-Star Cast Awards. Only 20 of those awards were awarded in the entire festival. Congratulations to Berkeley Middle School's theater team. Also, congratulations go out to the Lafayette Theater Department as they recently became VHSL conference champions for their one-act play, "The Yellow Boat" by David Sarr. Mark your calendars for Saturday, November 21st at 3:15 PM. The cast and crew will perform "The Yellow Boat" for regionals at Lafayette High School in the auditorium, and tickets are free. WJCC schools celebrated veterans during Veterans Day events last week throughout the school division. Students wore red, white, and blue. Family members serving our country were honored, and numerous schools held concerts that highlighted patriotic music. Photos of all of these events can be found on school websites and also on our school Twitter, our school Twitter accounts. This week, I taped the first video in a new series entitled "Good to Talk." During each two-minute video, I will highlight division accomplishments, initiatives, and programs, and I'll address other issues relevant to employees. "Good to Talk" will be available to all division employees through WJCC Connect, and the first episode will be posted later this week. I look forward to feedback on my efforts to enhance communications with employees in a way that I hope will be useful to them and that respects their very valuable and limited time. With that, we just want to make sure that we wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and that concludes our announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Constantino. Any board members have any announcements you would like to make? Would, second to Dr. Constantino's thoughts on Thanksgiving. If you're traveling, travel safe, and return home, return home in one piece, I guess. We have, I know, I'm sorry, Ruth. As we go to the end of the school year, there are holiday events throughout, throughout the school system at various schools. Please check the school's websites. Playoffs, Lafayette High School football team is in the playoffs.
Volleyball.
And War Hill volleyball and Jamestown volleyball, who I think are playing right now. If anybody wanted to text me results, I'd appreciate it. Any other announcements?
I just, I participated in the Veterans Day event at Stonehouse for the dress rehearsal. It was very nice, well attended. Kids did a nice job. Teachers did a nice job.
And as Mrs. Cordasco reminds me, we had flyers on our chairs here for "It's a Wonderful Life," December 3rd, 4th, and 5th at Jamestown High School. So put on by the Jamestown High School Theater. I'm sure it will be as stunning as all those productions are at all of our high schools there. We have an excellent theater program. 7.01, board recognitions?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. The Virginia School Board Association recognizes school board members for their dedication, time, and hard work in improving boardsmanship skills through VSBA meetings, conferences, board development, and training, and active involvement in the association. Board members earn credits for VSBA Academy Awards, which are based on participation from July 1st to June 30th of each year. There are five levels of awards with certificates and pins awarded for each level. Please join me in congratulating school board members on their accomplishments. And...
There she is.
Are we inviting people up? When I call your name, if you would make your way toward Ms. Overkamp Smith. An award of honor, level four, Mr. Kelly, chairman of the school board. And an award of distinction, level five, Mrs. Cordasco, vice chair. An award of excellence, Mr. Nichols, parliamentarian, sorry.
It's alright.
And an award of recognition for her first year on the board and all the work she's done, Kira Cook. Award of honor, Ms. Emanuel. And an award of achievement, Mr. Fuentes. And lastly, an award of distinction, Mrs. Larson. Thank you. School spotlight, Clara Bird Baker Elementary School, and I believe Mrs. Dorsey is going to start us off this evening.
We have our students and teacher to do a presentation about something important that has to do with Clara Bird Baker.
Hi, good evening, Chairman Kelly, Dr. Constantino, members of the board, and all those in attendance. My name is Rachel Samuels, and I'm the activities lead at Clara Bird Baker Elementary, where I work as a reading teacher. Tonight I have with me five outstanding Baker Bears who are here to share with you about our namesake, Mrs. Clara Bird Baker, and how her life directly parallels to an initiative we have implemented at our school this year. You'll notice they are wearing our new spirit wear that has on it the words "respectful, responsible, and ready."
In Clara Bird Baker's decades of teaching, she educated and inspired hundreds of students. Her greatest impact was on their lives. She helped them to be successful and challenged themselves to dream big. She was admired for being respectful, responsible, and ready.
This year at CBB, we are making school-wide expectations for that three R. We're respectful, we are responsible, we are ready, just like Mrs. Baker. Baker Bears grow and treat others the way that they would want to be treated in the classroom, hallways, cafeteria, playgrounds, and buses.
Ms. Baker was respectful. As a school teacher, Ms. Baker believed in education for all. When women got the right to vote in 1920, Ms. Baker was the first to vote here in Williamsburg. She told the man at the post, "I'm here to vote, sir."
Mrs. Baker was responsible. At the young age of 16, Mrs. Baker began her teaching career in one-room schoolhouse in Williamsburg. At her retirement, the Williamsburg School's superintendent stated that he could not remember any worthwhile community-wide effort in which Baker had not participated.
Mrs. Baker was ready. While, while she was working as a teacher, she continued her own education and earned a bachelor's degree in education. After she retired in 1967, she continued giving her time to, time and talents to volunteering in the community until her death in 1979.
I want to take a moment to recognize all of these wonderful fourth graders from Clara Bird. Did you introduce yourselves?
I'll do it for them. This is Janaya Cotton.
Hi, Janaya.
Connor Anderson.
Connor.
Jackson Jenny. Zachary Prince. And Thomas Bartlett. They did a lot of research on Mrs. Baker by reading about her life from newspaper articles, letters that her grandchildren wrote about her, anything they could get their hands on, and they synthesized it into the definitions that we were able to create about what these words mean to us. In addition to this work with our fourth graders, our kindergartners also wanted to contribute a little something tonight to our spotlight, so we'll turn it over to them with a musical interlude.
Alright, you ready? Wait, wait, let me out. Whenever Baker shows respect, shows respect, shows respect. Whenever Baker shows respect, every day. Whenever Baker was responsible, was responsible, was responsible. Whenever Baker was responsible, every time. Whenever Baker always got ready, always got ready, always got ready. Whenever Baker always got ready at her school. We will always show respect, be responsible, and get ready. We will always do our best, never leave our school.
Thank you, Ms. Samuels. It's certainly easy to determine which one is the extrovert in the crowd. And appreciate, appreciate you guys coming out tonight. 8.01, citizens' comments. I believe we have one speaker card. Mr. Nichols?
Kids leave.
Yeah.
What, you think people actually pay attention when you read it? Excuse me. Really doesn't.
I don't know.
Just read it while they're looking at it.
At this point in our meeting, we're going to take citizen comments about the business of the school board. Those citizens have submitted a card. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, direct your comments to the chair of the board. Again, in order to promote a listening and respectful environment, please avoid applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstration when the speaker is addressing the board. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. The school board requests that all speakers refrain from making any reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. The school board's role is to listen to the speaker rather than to respond to his or her comments, and each speaker is allocated three minutes to make his or her comments. The school board asks each speaker to respect the time limitation, and time may not be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Julie Colifer?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Julie Colifer, and I am a parent of three WJCC students, and I am here tonight to address my concerns regarding the proposed restraint and seclusion policy that was presented to you last board meeting. The U.S. Department of Education provides the following guidelines for the appropriate use of restraint and seclusion. Restraint or seclusion should never be used except in situation where a child's behavior poses imminent danger or serious physical harm to self or others, and should be avoided to the greatest extent possible without endangering the safety of students and staff. Therefore, it would conclude that restraint and seclusion should only be used in emergency situations to ensure the safety of the student, peers, and personnel. According to the U.S. Department of Education, restraint and seclusion should not be used as a routine strategy implemented to address instructional problems or inappropriate behavior such as disrespect, noncompliance, or insubordination, and it may not be used as a means of coercion or retaliation, or as a convenience. However, the proposed WJCC policy does not conclude that restraint and seclusion may be implemented solely for emergency situations, and in fact, it provides for the possibility of restraint and seclusion to be used in non-emergency situations. Lines 43 and 52 through 53 of the proposed policy state restraint, restraint and seclusion may be used as needed to quell a disturbance and to direct the movement or actions of a student to avoid the undue or deliberate disruption of the learning environment. Both of these justifications for use are subjective in nature and leave open the possibility of misuse for common situations. I ask you, what is a disturbance? What disturbances qualify as disrupting the learning environment? Is a disturbance a child yelling in a classroom exhibiting self-stimulating behavior such as flapping, humming, or tapping? This may seem extreme and a gross mischaracterization of disturbance, but these are all examples of what someone may deem as disruptive to the learning environment. As such, I respectfully ask that the board strike these lines from the current proposed document. I would also like to briefly address the use of mechanical restraints. The U.S. Department of Education states schools should never use mechanical restraints to restrict a child's freedom of movement. This same document clarifies that this does not ban the use of mechanical restraints necessary and provided for a child's ability to learn or safety as stated in their IEP 504 or other school documents. I would respectfully ask that they ban, that you ban the use of mechanical restraints in the WJCC restraint and seclusion policy. Lastly, several board members expressed concern about the sections of the proposed restraint and seclusion policy, and the discussion turned to addressing these issues and procedures rather than the policy itself. I would encourage you not to wait for the procedures to clean up any confusion in this policy. The policy is the first line of defense. It is the document that tells staff the parameters in which they may take action. Ultimately, it is the policy that provides the guarantee of rights and protections for all parties involved, not the procedures. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Colifer.
Kim Hundley and Karen Armstead?
Good evening, board. I'm Kim Hundley with the Williamsburg James City County Education Association. This is Karen Armstead. We're both on the executive board, and as you know, we've been spotlighting some of our youth here in Williamsburg, and it was so good to see the little kids here. Don't you just get, like, they're so cute, and, you know, just to get to show things. But we wanted to, again, present you with some artwork that children have, you know, made for you. They want you to keep it, so you can hang it in your house, or you can take it to a place of business and hang it. And, you know, we really feel as teachers that all children have gifts. Now, not all children are gifted, but all children have gifts, and we have gifts with fine arts, music, industrial arts, you know, different, kids have different talents. Also, last night I was able to go to, it was called Medical Explorers. It's through Centerra, but my daughter is a ninth grader, and what they do is they expose the students to different fields. And so, last night, we were at William &amp; Mary, and on their campus where the admissions office is, and they had some staff talk to the children. Now, William &amp; Mary is getting ready to have a big center for health and wellness and nutrition in two years, and what they were talking about is this is the generation of children that are coming up against "everybody does well," and kids are not being able to handle that stress very well. And so, at William &amp; Mary, I was surprised to learn that they actually have, 80% of their students are doing something related to health and wellness. Either they're on intramural teams, or they have 100 flag football teams, I didn't know about that, and they're always trying to do something for mental health to help them alleviate stress. Pardon?
One minute.
Okay, thank you. To alleviate stress. And so, I thought this was really good, because we have a lot of students that are not feeling like they measure up, trying to get into schools, that used to be able to have a 3.5, now 4.2, things like that, and they're taking their lives and things like that, and we just really want kids to be kids and have fun learning, to put their passion towards learning and these type of things. So, enjoy your artwork for this month, and it has the age of the student on the back.
Yes.
And it's from Matoka Elementary School students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval of 9.01, approval of minutes from the, from the following meeting, 10/2015, and 9.02 financial report and monthly bills and payroll October 2015? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's being discussed. It's been moved and seconded for approval of 9.01, approval of minutes from the following meeting, 10/2015, and 9.02 financial report and monthly bills and payroll October 2015. Ms. Serza?
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes?
Hi.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Hi.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi. Brings us to action item 10.01, award a contract for request for proposal number 168487, value engineering services for the new middle school to Faithful and Gold. Am I reading that right? I'm not sure why my board ducks isn't looking. To Faithful and Gold. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Dr. Constantino?
Mr. Kelly, we have placed the supporting documents that the board asked for, given you, we think we've given you the information that you requested in the last meeting, and Mr. Snipes is here to answer any additional questions you might have on the value engineering portion of this.
No, I'm just talking, she's having problems with her computer.
Is there any, any comments, questions from board members?
Can you give me one second? I thought I made a note in here on something, but I can't find it.
We had discussed at the last meeting, just taking future think into consideration as we do this value engineering, and I'm sure that you're going to work alongside the value engineering folks to make sure that we're doing that, that we talk about expansion, and we don't want to cut things too tight.
Yeah, and we will bring, when we bring the 35% presentation to the board, you know, clearly this is a tooth-based project, and clearly the long-term plan is to create a bigger school. So, everyone is mindful of the kinds of interior decisions that need to be made in order to expand the school, such that when that time comes, we don't find ourselves with, with issues. So, we're going to bring all of that to the board as well for your review.
Yeah. And...
Yeah, I recall what it was. Now, I appreciate the work done on this. The only thing I want to, and it's, this is already passed, but this is for the future, and I was looking at the evaluation, the criteria, we have the project approach. Everything seems to be weighted pretty much the same with the exception of, it says response time and firms proximity, which is at ten points, but we have the project team at thirty points, and along with project approach, very important, and the proposed. That'll make a difference? Anyway, the thirty points, I guess the concern I have, what I've found in the past is a lot of the vendors, it's a common practice to stack. I mean, what guarantee do you have that the project team that's presented is the project team that's going to be working on this? And I bring this more general, just, I mean, it's not just this, and when we do RFPs for other things. Do you understand what my question is?
Yes, I'm waiting for you to finish.
Oh, okay. Well, that's basically what I'm asking, is what guarantee do you have? Because what I've, the practice is, it's a common practice, I don't want to say everyone does this, but it's very common to put their A-team on the proposal, and then after award of the contract, then, you know, the JV team comes in. So I'm just, and that's why I'm asking.
Yes, sir. The project team was listed on their proposal when they came in to provide us during the interview, they listed the names of the people that will be on the project team.
Right, but then there's no guarantee that those people after award, and the reason I say this is we awarded a contract one time for, dare I say, redistricting, and the credentials of the person was outstanding. After the contract was let, that person was no longer, I mean, that person was like an expert, but that person was no longer around shortly after the contract was let. So I guess what I'm saying is, I think that's a lot of weight to give to the project team. I think more weight to the technical, the scope, and even the response time and proximity. It's just my opinion for future RFPs. I don't know.
Yes, sir. We will take that into consideration.
Yeah, I just, yeah, and that's all I'm asking. Take that into consideration because they can, there is no guarantee after you let the contract. That's a lot of weight, is all I'm saying, for something that you can't control after the contract is let. I don't know. That's all I had on that.
To Mr. Fuentes' point there is, on our RFP, was there substitution for, that it had approval for substituting versus the people who were on the proposal versus those who were, those who were actually doing the work? Is there, because very often to Mr. Fuentes' point there is that you can propose, and then after you win, then you can substitute one for the other, and I would say we wouldn't want to do that, allow that substitution, but I don't know if there's any provisions for that in the RFP.
Our purchasing agent from the county is here to be able to answer those questions if you need her to be here. Ms. Kitty Hall?
It's a good question.
Good question. Kitty, can you come up?
That's just a strategy to avoid with Mr. Fuentes' point.
Good evening. Yes, in the RFP, we asked for the interview team to bring with them to the interview the project team that will be assigned to this project. Those are the individuals that we interview, and that is what is one of the basis for the contract award, is the expertise and the knowledge that they bring to the team. So yes, the project team that was presented to us at the interview and the evaluation meeting is the team that's going to be assigned to this value engineering project.
All right. Does that help you, Mr. Fuentes?
Right, I saw that in there. I still, again, this is probably more for the future because we're here, but I guess when I saw that, that it had that much weight on it, I know that in every, one of my experiences with every RFP, the A-team always shows up, and out of that A-team, or whatever that team is, when you actually start to, when the contract is let, and maybe on this one, I'm not saying every single case, but some of the bigger contracts, and then different people all of a sudden appear. They're not, you know, the same. So I'm just saying, as far as weight, I would look at the, I would weight it a little bit different. Of course, you want to look at the depth of the team that they have in the whole, in the whole, in the whole organization. I just thought that was kind of, kind of a heavy weight, but for the project team, that was something that was not something you could control after the contract was let.
One of the conditions of the contract is that the project team that comes in for the interview will be the one assigned to this project, and we have assurances of the project lead person that will be assigned to this is going to be on this project.
Okay. Thank you.
So the, we came down to two top, how did we decide which of those two to award the contract to?
We, the evaluation team evaluated them individually, and then we met together as a group to review the summary scores and discuss them, and of the four proposals that were submitted, there were two that were clearly defined as the two higher-ranking firms, and for a project of this size, it made sense to move forward with those two for the interview process, to bring them in and further evaluate their proposals, to have them discuss their approach in more detail, to take Q and A from the team. There were some questions that were sent ahead of time for them to come in and provide to us that we were able to discuss with them, and as the interview was progressing, at the conclusion of the interviews with both teams, the decision was made to award to Faithful &amp; Gould based on several criteria which you have in your board agenda.
And the value of this contract is fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, they, as I read the scope, they identify the high-cost areas, they submit, I guess they, I don't know if they have it in discussions with our design firm, submit areas where we can, I'm not sure how to say this, but reduce cost or areas that they, no, we don't have to take those recommendations, we, they're just proposals for us to consider and.
That's correct. That's correct. And value engineering is not only just a reduction in cost, it's to be able to identify functionality within the design, work closely with the design team and the school division team to look at function, to look at the design, and one of the areas that Faithful &amp; Gould was strong in was twenty-first century learning. They've got vast experience with that, with working with DOD schools, and also their lead, who was assigned to this project, is a school board member in his locality for twenty-plus years, I believe. So those things, put them over the top.
Twenty-plus years, I'm not sure that helps. The, I know that this board is very concerned as we go to design and build the school that it's expandable, that the infrastructure's there, so we don't want to lose that as part of the value engineering process, that it saves us money now but costs us money later. So, you know, just as we move forward, just have to be cognizant of that and make sure that we're still building the school that we need, and be careful about the value engineering part of it.
Yes, sir. And in regards to the other reasons that Faithful &amp; Gould were, they're understanding of the importance of flexible learning, as well as that the price was considerable, fair and reasonable. They looked at, we also looked at, they looked at function driving cost versus cost driving the function. So they did understand about the phase two, and they understood how they were going to incorporate that with Waller Todd and Savilewicz, our architect.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Okay. It's been moved and seconded for the, let me get there, to award a contract for value engineering services for the middle school facility to Faithful &amp; Gould for, help me with the number, fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Ms. Cerza?
Mr. Fuentes.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Nichols.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mrs. Cordasko.
No.
Ms. Emanuel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye. Moves us to eleven point zero one, proposed agenda items, approval of WJCC School Foundation's contribution to learning grants. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Because the school board has one meeting in December, we're going to come back to you and ask you to approve a donation from the Williamsburg James City County, the WJCC Schools Foundation, as per the bylaws that you have approved earlier this year. As you know, they've been actively, have an active fundraising campaign going on, and they will make their final determination on the nineteenth of November, which followed this meeting. So in order, so this in some respects is similar to a placeholder item that we would use in RFP situations. We will come back in December and let you know the amount of money we're asking you to accept, which hopefully will be a robust number and hopefully will be relatively easy for the board to do. I will remind the board that all of the work that's being done with regard to the issuing of grants is all being done in a blind fashion. That information will not be released until January eighth, until the awards are actually made to the individual schools and teachers. So at that time, we will come back and certainly share with the board the awards that have been made, the projects that have been awarded grant monies, and certainly keep the board apprised. This is simply to follow the bylaws and follow the memorandum of understanding that you've approved. The foundation seeks your approval to accept their donation to you on December fifteenth.
Any questions from board members?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I would just add that we have, according to the Grants Committee, Programs Committee, there have been, I believe, twenty-five grants that have been received and across elementary, middle, and high school, and from what I'm hearing, you know, they're quite, quite good. And so they are working very hard to award those and to, moving forward, they will certainly work with schools that weren't represented this year and make sure that they're working with their principals to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to apply for a grant, but it's, so far, it seems to be pretty good across the spectrum.
You're talking about grant applications?
Correct, yes.
That's not what you said, but that's.
Sorry, grant applications.
Any other comments or discussion from board members? Okay, thank you. Eleven point zero two, fiscal year twenty seventeen, fiscal year twenty twenty-six, capital improvement plan discussion. Dr. Constantino?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, as we described in the budget calendar for this year, this is just an opportunity for the board to continue their discussions on the CIP information that was shared with you last week. Staff is certainly here to answer any questions that you have or seek any other information that you are in need of. The plan is for your, for you to be able to approve the final capital improvement plan at your December fifteenth meeting.
Any comments from board members? Mrs. Cook?
So I just have a question about items that can be included in the CIP that come bubble up through maintenance or through the building leadership, and if you could, are any of those items on this CIP before us today?
Yes.
If you could just kind of help me, because I'm discern which ones come up that way and which ones come up as a result of the study that was just completed.
Sure. There's a requirement in the county and city capital improvement plan development process that requires that a project be fifty thousand dollars or greater in value. So many of the projects that are being recommended by schools and by the maintenance department fall below that threshold. So we are making a list of those and going to put them as consideration into our operating budget so that they still can be addressed. They need to be, they cannot be housed in our capital improvement plan because they fall below that threshold.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Would that change at all with more the adoption of that component piece of things? In other words, perhaps there are all the pieces that would add up to greater than fifty thousand dollars?
It would depend on the project. Most of our big asset items will fall above fifty thousand, even in the component approach. I think more namely like playground equipment is a piece that has been discussed in our discussions at the administrative level, where we're finding that our playground equipment is aging, and we need to do that replacement, but because of the requirements under the city and county CIP development process, we have to address those through our operating budget.
Okay, and I'm.
Mr. Fuentes?
We're all on that same thing. I know that she's not finished. And to what I think your point is, so like, I don't know how much playground equipment is, but let's just say each one was ten thousand. If you're doing two or three of them, or whatever, did the cumulative effect, wouldn't you just call it the playground project and it goes above fifty thousand?
Typically, projects are proposed by school, not as a division-level project where we would look at three school replacements. So we're trying to look at it from that perspective and maintain the quality of the data that the county and city like to see in the CIP development process. That could be something we discuss moving forward, where we group light projects together with them, but in order to try to maintain the approved plan funding, we had to strategically figure out where we could put items over the course of the next four years.
Okay, and I use that example, but maybe within the school, though, like to what Ms. Cook was saying, if all the little jobs add up to fifty thousand within the school, that becomes a, you know, some sort of renovation or something?
Typically, they're looked at as individual projects. They're not looked at as groups.
Okay. All right.
I'd just like to say that on the video we saw today with the kindergartners at Clara Bird Baker on really what appeared to be a fabulous playground, I was in Norwich Elementary a few weeks ago, and that playground equipment, I think, really needs some attention. And then we also heard from stakeholders at Lafayette about some items, and I was just curious what the thinking is on those items from.
Lighting.
The lighting and.
Walkway.
Gym.
The gym.
The gym and a bridge.
Previously, the walkway to War Hill was in our CIP, I believe, about four years ago, and was removed. The auxiliary gym discussions have occurred over the last, I want to say, ten years. They've been in and out of the CIP. They were discussed and removed as well. As far as sports field lighting, we will definitely look into that, the sports field lighting at all of our facilities.
So for, I understand it's moved in and out of the CIP, and we just had this great study done that helps us understand with existing, but as the superintendent pointed out, that didn't include, you know, new items, and so it would be helpful for me to understand what new items. I mean, I know central office and, you know, some other, the addition to the fourth middle, but for the, are there any other items that we prioritize as a community or as a school division that should be on the radar? That'd be helpful as a new board member and my little certificate of recognition as such. I would love to better understand.
Mr. Fuentes?
Well, and, well, there's a couple of things, but first, piggybacking off her on the Lafayette concerns that we heard, because, and you had said that the aux gym, that's been on, I think, even more than ten years. It was on, then it came off, and then one of the reasons it came off, though, was that the county had proposed at one time, they were going to put the aux gym at James River, or James Town, which they did. I think that was just completed recently.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
And what they were, at the same time, we took off two aux gyms, I think, one for War Hill and one for Lafayette, correct? Those were on there at one time. We took them off because the county was going to build a central gym at Whisk, and then we were going to share it. And then after we took it off our CIP, the Whisk gym got yanked from the county. So, you know, I guess, I guess I think what I'm trying to say is I think it's time that we revisit that for both War Hill and especially since I'm hearing that James Blair here has become the aux gym for them. So we might need to revisit putting the aux gym back on the CIP, or talk with the county about, okay, that was the plan, and that's why we took it off the CIP, so if they're not going to build that, let's put this back on the CIP. I don't know, I mean, that's what I'd like to share on that. The walkway to Whisk, of course, if you're going to do that, we need the walkway to, well, we should have that anyway because there's things over there that can be used that the school can use, the lit practice fields, and I think they said theater needs, but, and I'm not familiar with the theater needs. I know these other ones have come up multiple times, and there's probably some other things over there. over there. And I'm happy that the citizens came out and spoke tonight to remind us of the aux gym thing, because I, I think that when that came off, we all kind of, the, the school community kind of forgot about it because the county had said they were going to build that gym. The other piece that I wanted to bring up, we had a citizen that sent some comments today, and I appreciate that the administration addressed most of them, or addressed them. You know, I guess, I assume that you'll be sending that back to the citizen. There were two on here, number five, alternatives looked at arriving, the 14.5 million for the new central office. And I, and obviously, we will look at options when it comes time, but I think we had always had in the past a placeholder. At one time, it was eight million, like a long time ago. When I first came on the board, I think it was like eight million, you know, so 14.5, that's just, we're just talking about a placeholder right now, right? Based on square footage?
Right. As, as we mentioned to you last week, subsequent to five years in this plan, it's not a budget. It is a placeholder item. There have been other questions in conversations with board members about that, and we have discussed in the past all different kinds of options for the central office. And I suspect when that comes around again, we'll have those, those conversations. So it really truly is a placeholder item, just to stay focused on the fact that the day will come when, if and when this building is expanded, if the school on this property is expanded, the central office will need to be relocated.
So, okay, I think you're saying what, right, that based on the square footage that we thought we need, based on what we thought it was going to cost before.
And escalating that cost out into the future.
That's how you came to the 14.5. And then, of course, right, when it comes time, right. And then the one that I didn't understand was the planned dollars for the four, fourth middle school, $12 million below the, the report, because I seem to recall that the county gave us so much money, what was it, 29?
28.
28 million or something, right? For the, right? And then there was the phase two, and that phase two was going to add up to a certain, where did this come from? I may, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but, but is that true that, like right now, we're estimating it's $12 million less than what we thought it was going to be?
Yes, that's true. We asked the current architect, Walatotan Salad, to provide an updated and validated cost estimate for the phase two end fiscal year 2025, 2025. And they, that's the estimate they provided.
Really, the, if the board remembers back when RRMM gave their report, they were basing that report on a very different design and a very different schematic of what this property was going to be. Since that time, with the selection of the architect and the design of the building, we now believe, you know, we're, this number is more accurate than a year ago, or whenever that, I don't know if it was a year ago, whenever RRMM talked to us about the future needs of the middle school. Also, there have been obviously lots of conversations about the middle school, and I want, I don't exactly recall the discussion, but a lot of conversations about the future also included the cost of the central office rolled into it. So there was, there was the cost of the building, the cost of the potential audition, audition, addition, and then the cost of the relocation, potential construction of the central office as well.
Okay. So what we proposed, so this is lower than what we proposed last year in our CIP? Did we, we proposed phase one and phase two last year? I can't, I'm sorry, I apologize for.
We only included phase one because last year we did a five-year plan, not a 10-year plan, so we weren't projecting that far out.
Okay. That, that's why that wasn't on there. So now this shows up and, and then, but phase one, though, still within what we thought it was going to be?
Yes.
That didn't, that didn't change?
No.
And that's the curious part, though. Why wouldn't that go down based on the schematic and all that, or is, do you know what I'm saying? You said that the, based on the programatics and how the schematics of what they thought, why wouldn't the phase one be impacted by that also?
I think, and the architects will be here next month, and that might be a question to ask them when they get here. I can only, I can only surmise an answer to that, and that has, probably has a lot to do with the design of this building as opposed to the design that was being proposed by RRMM when they gave you the presentation. But that's conjecture on my part, and that's a question we need to ask.
Okay. Mrs. Larson?
Thank you. I am concerned too about the lack of athletic facilities that are addressed in the capital improvement plan. And I know that when we talked, I do though, thank you for this information. I think it was well done. I think it was needed, and I appreciate that. I am sorry that it did not include, but we had talked about it. We knew that that wasn't going to, it wasn't going to include athletic facilities because a couple of things, the auxiliary gym at Lafayette, and it all goes back to exactly what Mr. Fuentes said. Lafayette High School does use Wisk currently. Their, their baseball team plays at Wisk, I believe. I am concerned, we've had people that have contacted us about looking at lacrosse in the future. So just some, some talking about, and I, and I don't know the best way to get there, but I do think that it's a conversation that we need to have. What are some future athletic needs that we might have? And can we anticipate? One of those being a pool. We, you know, I, it's no, you know, it's no secret, I have, my youngest daughter's a swimmer, she's sophomore. She will use the facility that is here. She will probably graduate. But I worry about the swimmers coming behind her. The rec center is not a facility that they can dive. They have to go off the wall. They swim at Hampton University, which we are very fortunate to have, and I appreciate Hampton University allowing that. But that's quite a bit of travel that our, our swim teams do to get there. And the, as the, the sport is huge here. If we're not going to be able to maintain that sport because as our facilities age, when Hampton, I believe Hampton University keeps that pool going in order for high schools to use it. I could, I could be incorrect, or they might use it for something else, but not for much. When that happened, they decide, we're not, we're no longer going to maintain that, what's, what then? And so if it's, comes down to, we're not going to be able to do swimming here any longer, then I think that's a conversation that we owe to our community that we need to, we need to be having. You know, what, what is, we used to, a pool was an athletic, an aquatic facility was another thing that we used to keep on this, and we finally took it off. But to be fair to our athletes, we, it's a conversation we need to have. And again, if we're not going to be able to provide, we just need to let people know, you know, swimming's not going to be a sport we're going to be able to offer. And so, you know, the lighting on the fields, I think, goes back to the rec center, excuse me, the recreation department, Parks and Rec that we work with through James City County. They use a lot of the fields at our schools for their needs as well as ours, and so they've probably worked the lighting into those. But it probably would be a good thing to have an equity audit of our athletic facilities. And if there is, you know, if, if they don't have that lighting at Lafayette, you know, how can we work with Parks and Rec to get it done? I'm sure they're, they're looking for, for more fields all the time. And they do work with us on our baseball by having Lafayette play at Wisk. So that was some of my concern with the, with the CIP that I, that I wanted to bring forward this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Larson, in regards to your questions about the, the aquatic, the aquatic center and the use of this swimming pool, I believe that our, the educational adequacy assessment does address that.
Okay.
Part of that, that study.
I didn't, I didn't find that.
Okay.
But I've, I've been reading through this, so I was, thank you for that, and I will look for that.
Mrs. Manuel?
I was just going to remark to, on Mr. Fuentes' comments, because the auxiliary gym, remember back when, when, when Jamestown wanted to have an auxiliary gym, they said they needed it because Lafayette had an auxiliary gym. Now Lafayette doesn't have an auxiliary gym, so, you know, it seems to me that that kind of goes along with this equity thing. Because you've taken the auxiliary gym at Lafayette, which was back there in where the old auto shop was and all of that, and it's being used as an alternative facility and stuff like that. So we're using that space, but it's not as an auxiliary gym.
Mrs. Cordaska?
Well, I just want to say that the study that you did represents a huge first step. And one of the questions that was brought up by the concerned citizen was, was the county consulted? And I know that they were, and they weren't interested in, in doing that, even though they themselves have been required since 2009 comprehensive plan to do a study similar to this. But I do wonder if some of the concerns addressed tonight show that perhaps there's a little bit more comprehensive plan that is needed, because we're seeing that there are a few more pieces besides just the, the facilities index of the actual building. Because we do address more than just what happens in the building. We have sort of touched on some of the other things that kids participate in, whether it's athletics or, you know, things, some things were brought up about theater previously. So I think we have to be comprehensive, and I really, it didn't strike me until tonight that you could really look at comprehensively, what is the status of all of our playground equipment? And when can we roll that in, and how can we order it together so that it does become, you know, more cost efficient? So I just think that that would be a great additional layer to put on. It shouldn't be expected for what you did because it wasn't asked for, but it just seems like it's one of those things that when we're all together and we're talking, and we've opened it up for people to make comments, that gives you an additional opportunity to look at things, so.
And if you turn to page six in your CIP, you'll see that playground equipment is out in 2025. It's a, it's a placeholder item, but it's out there. But we have begun to ask our schools about playground equipment. Traditionally, playground equipment was repaired by operations and replaced with schools funds and PTA funds. Just recently, we partnered with DJ Montague to replace some of their equipment. So it is, it is in there, and we have begun to do an audit on those.
Just think of how much playground equipment we could have bought. We didn't have to spend it all on the sinkhole. That wasn't our fault, that was.
The county, the county does provide their, they have a new playground inspector that they provide to us, and they have begun doing an audit on all of our playgrounds.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to be able to wait till 2025 on that. Mr. Nichols?
I agree with what Ms. Larson was saying about the facilities. Our attraction as a school division is our academics, but also our, our sports and our arts. And I think we're going to start lagging behind in that area if we aren't keeping it in front as we are trying to do in other areas. So, and I, I think in terms of lighting, I was looking at Tuano, I guess. Somewhere I was seeing it.
Field lighting.
Field lighting is out to 2020, out in 2026. I, you know, with all the competing requirements for everything that we need to have done. And, and at Stonehouse, I was, when I was there for the veterans event, I was looking at this, at the gym auditorium. Yeah, it really was in bad, bad shape. Okay. Yeah, so is it leaking?
No, not to my knowledge, it's not leaking. It's just peeling from the heat and the constant heat and the cold.
So it, so I, I just wanted to join in and say that I'm glad that the playground equipment is, is there. That certainly needs to be replaced on a regular basis. I think we have to address the issues of our sporting athletics, and I'm thankful for Mr. Fuentes reminding at least me about the, how that all came about, because it fell off my radar scope, but we need to, we need to do something about that. And, you know, I remember starting on the school board, having the aquatic center on there, and then it was gone and hasn't been back since. And there's been discussion in the county about it, and I was looking at terms of the cost for any revenue. And the, in the reading of the materials that I have found, I mean, it's, it's, there is no revenue to be found. It's a service provided to the community. We have a member of our community who his kids went through our school division, who came from Indiana, Kentucky. And the first time that he moved here, he was just appalled by the fact that we didn't have any pools in our school. And then the second thing he was appalled about is that where they draw 2,000 people to a basketball game, a football game, we were drawing about 150, maybe, pushing it 200. So I, I got it in both years, and I tried to share with him the fiscal realities of how things are done here in Virginia as opposed to Indiana or Kentucky. But his points were well taken, you know, as, as we move forward and try to be the premier school division that we would like to be.
Mrs. Larson?
Thank you. I appreciate the partnership with the, with the, was it the DJ PTA?
Yes.
But we just have to be very careful there, because we've been down this road, it's not the PTA's responsibility to provide our playgrounds. It's, and, and really, unless it's changed since I served in a leadership capacity, their, their role is programming. And the, the issue is, is that that playground equipment belongs to Williamsburg, James City County. And we could go in and say, well, Norwich doesn't look as good, so we're going to grab out that playground equipment, and we're going to take it to Norwich. Now, the chances are very low that we're going to do that here. But that's a possibility, because it becomes the ownership of the school division. So I, I just want to make sure through this process that we're working, you know, we're not looking to them to, to fund our playgrounds that need to be fixed. Partnerships and that type of thing that you work out is one thing, but coming in and replacing entire playgrounds at schools is another. So I just, I just want to urge caution there.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes, and I appreciate Ms. Larson reminding the board of the aquatic center discussion, because I, yeah, I do remember that discussion way back when. But what's in, recently, the county, and first, let me go back to you, Mr. Snipes, you had mentioned that something in the, the facility study book about the pool, about a pool?
I believe, I believe, yes, we asked them to look at the educational, and the educational adequacy of the assessment of the pools at our, at each high school. That was one of the program requirements.
At each height, but we don't have.
Well, how many pools at the high school?
Yeah, what?
If we would, the program requirements, when they met with our teachers and our staff, one of the questions that was proposed was what would we like to have at our schools? So that educational adequacy was based on our program requirements.
Okay, so, yeah, and I apologize because I didn't see that in there, but I, I do think it's important to note, because this was the conver, the conversation we had, it was around 2006, 2007, on the, on the aquatic center was. And, and, you know, I do recall when this was built right down the street, you know, when I first moved up here, it was like 88 or timeframe. And as soon as it was built, the community had outgrew it. I mean, you know, the, they started pushing our high school kids to come, you know, they were going at 5:00 in the morning or whatever. I don't even know if they can use it anymore. And, and then I think York County has the YMCA over there, but that's not adequate either. And, you know, it, there is not enough aquatic space for everybody. But what I really would like, somehow, you know, I don't know whether we can put it back on this CIP in a future year, but I think there should be a discussion with the board supervisors, because I think this is something that would benefit the schools, Parks and Rec, and then also it would be, it would also bring in revenue. Now, is the revenue going to completely pay for it? No, but at least it, it offsets some of it so that, that, that the school gets a benefit and the community gets a benefit. And it is definitely educational, because that's where people go to learn to swim so they don't drown in the James River. So I think it's, I think, I'm not sure that was looked at, because there was that study that you sent me, Mr. Snipes, where they did the gym and the, and it, and it seemed to focus mainly on revenue. It didn't focus on the, on the intangible benefits that you can get from, from that, from the, having an aquatic center. That seems to be in most, a lot of the communities have them. And if we had a really state-of-the-art one, I really do think we would bring in a lot of people for that. But that's a discussion, though, that I think we should have with the, with. That's a discussion, though, that I think we should have with the, with, and I do, the equity audit, I, I think that's a perfect, a perfect description of probably what we need to do across the schools as far as the extracurriculars, that, like you were saying. And the, like, the lighted fields, I think, you know, where do, you know, I'm not sure you can answer this, Dr. Constantino, like, where does the band practice in the evening, you know, when they go out and do their thing? You know?
No idea.
Yeah, I mean, I guess out in the lighted parking lot or something. Yeah, so, you know, I hear them out there playing, they're doing something, but, but anyway, I, I like that comment, that we might need to do something like that. And I don't know what the, you know, what the board thinks about what some of these things are, because I guess you're trying to bring this to us next week? And are you bringing, is the, what we vote on just the next three years?
Typically, what you do is you adopt a five-year plan. We're gonna ask you to adopt a 10-year plan, but the first year is truly what the county and city look at for funding, just the first year of the plan.
Okay, so, since we're at this point, so what, what, some of the things like the aux gym, I mean, I, some of these things that we're talking about, the aux gym, the lighting, the walkway, the, and even the aquatic center that at one time was on there, although that was, it was, I think it was far, it was like eight years out.
Yes, you're correct.
And then as we got a little closer, it just kind of, and it was, you know, you know, we did have a, a mass recession at one time, I think that's when it kind of disappeared. But, I mean, so how do we get these things back onto the CIP?
Dr. Constantino.
It's actually a great segue into a couple of things I'd like to say. First of all, I think we all recognize that it's going to take a number of years to climb out of the cuts of the recession. Everything just didn't get done, and now all of a sudden, we're back and we're trying to get things done. And it's going to take a long time to get everything on there. The, the administration has worked diligently to provide a recommendation to the board based on what we know, what we've learned, and what we believe are the pressing needs of the school division. We don't have a crystal ball, and we are not here to say what we are proposing is absolutely correct and you should just vote on it. It's the board's CIP, and it's, we have done, we can answer every question and we can justify why we've done what we've done, but that is not to say that it is the board's priority. And if the board wants to change the priority or add to the priority, I would highly encourage you to do so. We need some, we would need some direction from you as to what you would like to add or move or adjust. What Ms. Berta just said, I think, is critical, that everybody's gonna be focused on this year because of the funding. And so we tend to push things. We have a finite amount of funding that we believe has been shared with us. So all of that to say that we have proposed to you a CIP that addresses most of the needs, but as you have brought up this evening, some things that have been on the CIP in the past that are not there, things that were supposed to happen that didn't happen as a result of the recession or whatever, all of those things, I think, need to be addressed. And, and we, we would just need some direction from you as to what you'd like us to do, and we're happy to do that. Lastly, we always seem to be searching for topics at the joint meeting of what to talk about. This seems to be a great topic to talk about, since so much of this overlaps between all of the communities and has an impact on citizens, not only just parents of school age children, but, but citizens in the community. So I would also recommend to the board that when we get to the point of setting an agenda for the joint meeting, that you clearly establish CIP discussion is something you'd like to discuss.
Mrs. Cook.
I am in favor of considering adding all of these things we've discussed tonight in the CIP at, at some point, but I'd like to do so within some kind of context. And, and so I think some, and I think, Dr. Constantino, you were very clear about this study, that was the indexing study that was just completed, that that was gonna be a first step. So I think we've kind of started to unearth what the next steps are, and I think in equity of existing facilities, but then also the, you know, because I'd like to see some, some information behind the requests, but I think we all are interested in that and would like to know more to, so that we're able to justify putting it in the CIP and in outline years between now and, and mid-December, it seems like, you know, maybe it's too soon to add any of that stuff back in. But I think for next year, it would be great to have that information so that we can, with the same amount of confidence that we, that you all used the indexing study, then add a layer of that, would be great.
Well, and, and I, you know, I wasn't here, superintendent, when there were discussions of this gym that was gonna be used. If that's the case, you know, I'd, I'd like to have a conversation about, is that even feasible before we go down the road of an equity study that we didn't have to do, because, oh, we're gonna do this? So, I'm not sure, kind of having a chicken and the egg moment in my head about what comes first, but, you know, we're, we're happy to, to make sure that this reflects the board's vision of what's important and what needs to be done.
Right, but I think some further studies needed.
Mr. Nichols.
In terms of the FY '18 and going out, I was looking at, at the numbers. For '17, we're, we've got a total of $5,572, excuse me. The next year, '18, we're, we're down about $600, $600,000 there. Then it goes back up, then it goes down to 2.8, and then goes to 7.7, and then it goes up to 31 in those out years. Is there any particular reason why it?
Yeah.
Well, a middle school, a school.
Well, there's a middle school and a central office and all those neat things. But one of the stipulations that I asked the staff to work under, and it's, it's something that I thought was important for this discussion, was to say, look at the county CIP and look at the amount of money they project to have, and do our best to try to work within those means, understanding that in some cases we can, in some cases we can't. So, we made some determinations about the acuteness of projects. Things got pushed off beyond the five years, and those things that seem to be more in need, especially with systems, heating systems, those kinds of things, you'll find some of those in the, in the first five years. So it's, it's, in some respects, and if it's a faulty premise, then I certainly take responsibility for it, but the premise was to try to, to do our best to level out the CIP expenditures over at least the first five years, because we've had years in the past where we've gone from, you know, $2 million to $12 million to $3 million. And I, and I personally felt that we needed to use this study, use this information, gather it together, and figure out a pathway through projects, not only that need to be done in the future, but that should have been done, that didn't get done because of financial situations in the last five years.
Well, I was looking at that, and I was trying to, there were some projects that really, you know, at Stonehouse particularly, where they've been waiting, and I've mentioned this the last time, they've been waiting a long time for the, for the bus.
Bus canopy.
The bus canopy. I mean, the school's been there for 15 years, and waiting until, where'd it go? I lost Stonehouse.
School year 21.
Yeah.
I'm sorry on that, I thought we, the last time we mentioned it, you were saying they were all getting done.
Not the bus canopy.
The canopies.
We talked about the DJ canopy last meeting.
Oh, they're the DJ, yeah, they're getting.
Oh, they're getting theirs.
They're getting their canopy.
Ever since.
But I don't know how long the DJ canopy has been on there, but obviously DJ's been around longer than, than Stonehouse has been. So I don't want to deny DJ their canopy.
Still another 10 years or 15 years.
Yeah, I'm just trying, you know, the, you know, it's premissed on the, you know, on the information that, the fact that we went through the Great Recession, we had to put a lot of things on hold, and now everything's coming due, and we don't have the resources to meet everything that we need and want for our school division, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think, my perspective on the, on the capital plan, obviously, the first year is, is the year that, those are the projects we want, we're serious about, that we want to go get done. The following four years are projects that we think we need to get done, but still, still in a planned stage, and then the, the out years are the, are the, these are the things we need to have a conversation about. I think you've, I think you've heard in the, from tonight, that we want to have a conversation about several things. The pool and the, and the lighting and some of those, some of those things that the.
The aux gym.
Okay, okay.
We'll just help you along.
So, so you heard some things that we want to, we want to have part of the conversation, I think, and I don't know that we can, we're in a position to put those in the conversation in, in December. I think we're gonna have to put some thought into that, into the, into 2016, and then come back in the end of next year. Because, because the purpose of us approving this capital plan now is to get this into the county's wheelhouse so that they can, they can, as they go through their planning commission and develop their CIP, that this is in that conversation. So, you know, as far as the first year, I think that's, that's a good, it's a good thing. The study that was done, that has been mentioned several times, I think was well done, from, I'm still continuing to digest it and read it and reread it. The, one of the things that struck me by it is it's yet another example of how this school system in this community is transitioning from a small school system to a moderate school system, that, where we could do things before with, with Band-Aids and duct tape, now we gotta be a little more serious, a little more process-driven, a little more, a little more thoughtful on how we do things. The conversation, the discussion in there about preventive maintenance and, and the lack of, of formal preventive maintenance system is, is concerning, and I think, I think we need to kind of come through that, and the, the, a maintenance manual, that there wasn't processes, the procedures in there for, in our, in our, in our system for considering the maintenance, I think those are all telling us that, you know, we're, we're growing up now, we're starting, starting to be a, a different school system, and we need to, we need to really kind of think about those things. So, I thought that, I thought that, that manual is, is going to be good for us in the long term. I think it's gonna help as we implement what's in there, help the county and the city in level loading, understanding what's, what we're going, and kind of helping, helping them to do their budgets as well. So, I just think that was, that was a real good thing that we, we had done.
One comment, in, another question that has come forward that I'd like to address is our decision not to recommend to you to spend over $1 million in maintenance. You know, last week, we explained the component versus the systems. And once again, these are recommendations to the school board, but I think when you're looking at spending $1 million on maintenance staff before we know a governor's budget, before we have an enrollment projection, and before we've even begun to discuss the academic needs of the school division, I'm taking the last four or five years into consideration and, and surmising at the moment that we probably can't afford to do it. If by some chance we could, then certainly those decisions could be revisited, but it's not an arbitrary or capricious decision, it's one based on trend analysis of money that we, have been available to us, and remembering that the core business of this organization is teaching and learning.
Right.
And we have to make sure that the money flows into the classroom as well.
Right, the, one of the things that, that report, that study did point out is how well our, our facilities have been maintained with, with the resources that we put there. So I, I don't want, I don't want that to be reflected, that, you know, we're, we're not doing what we need to do. I mean, I think, I think, I think it was well detailed in there that, you know, our facilities are good, I don't think we should be ashamed of that, I think we, you know, we have excellent facilities, and I think that, that reflects well upon the school system and upon the community as well. So, that's not, that's not something we should shy away from. But, as we, as we move into a larger, a larger division, we need to, you know, make sure we're doing those, those right things to ensure the long-term success of, of the school system, the facilities and the buildings, and what, and more importantly, what happens inside there. And, and as you pointed out, one of the, one of the things that the study recommended was adding 15 FTEs. I think, I think any school board would have, would struggle with adding 15 FTEs in maintenance when we have teacher assistants and other things that affect classroom and learning that we need to look at too, so, anyway.
I just wanted to make one follow-up comment if I could. My, my purpose in bringing up things like the auxiliary gym and the Aquatics Center, I just want to make sure that we're being very upfront with our staff and with our parents. If we're not able to offer facilities, then I think we need to, you know, make sure that we're upfront and we're not putting programming out there that we're not able to sustain. And, you know, I'm not sure at Lafayette what, what, what are, what they're having to do, but I think we know from our dealings at Jamestown, they were having to practice wrestling in a, in, in a cafeteria with mats and that type of thing, so, and I'm sure that, that that is some of what is happening to Lafayette. And so if we're not gonna be able to give them the facilities that they need in order to operate the programs that they have, then, then we need to let them know that. So, you know, this is something that, that they've been waiting for, for quite some time. So I, I just, it's all about being upfront.
Right, right. Any other comments on the CIP before we move on? 12.01, board member comments. Any board members have comments this evening?
Wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Mrs. Cook.
Today, all the elementary schools had their Thanksgiving feast and invited families to come and eat. I heard Matoka had over 100 families coming, so, and I had the pleasure of eating at Matthew Whaley, and I am still full, so it was really good.
Mrs. Cordaska.
Just a couple of things. I wanted to do a follow-up question, because I know a couple of meetings back, we had some questions from some employees by, because of the change of the payroll that we had done. And we had investigated a few, we had asked a few questions about whether or not we might be able to have some tax advice given or some other options, and I wondered if there'd been any follow-up for that, so. Okay, yeah, if you, if you could, that would be great. And also, in one of the comments that I had last week about the possibility of, of using some of our students as more of an internship-type of situation in some of the, the trades, Mr. Snipes did tell me that there's been a little bit of that going on, but I'd like to, I'd like to see that more. Also happened to notice that when we were looking at feedback on the new middle school, that unfortunately, the career and technical side was not able to be represented in some of the meetings, and so was hopeful that perhaps, I know that there was an invitation for them to submit comments, but I didn't know if that had actually happened, and since that's an area that's extremely important to me, I would very much like to know whether or not that had, had been addressed at all. And had also the opportunity to attend the Historic Black Education Alumni Society that was actually alumni of, of, of the Bruton Heights School, and that was extremely interesting. I learned a lot and was able to, to hear some of the stories of, of people there, so I really appreciated being there. And I also want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I know that, I've heard some comments from teachers about misunderstanding how much time they had to be at school on Wednesday, so that might be something, again, to be addressed as far as the calendar committee. I know that there's some input, but again, sometimes my concern is that not everybody gets to put their input in, and there seemed to be quite a bit of angst as far as that's concerned. I do understand that we started school late this year because Labor Day was late, and that we have a lot of other constraints and concerns, but again, I think communication is really, really important as far as that's concerned.
Mrs. Larson.
Thank you, and I, to go to that point, I think what we did, we sent out a survey about, because there was two weeks that were wanted at holiday, and so we sent out a survey and said, which would you, if you had to pick, half-day on Wednesday or come back nine days? So I think that's how that, that was arrived at, but I, I hear you. So, I'm just going to point out that today, Dr. Constantino, Clarence Wilson, Lori Cromwell, and I presented at the. and I presented at the VSBA Education Foundation pre-conference, and I think that went over very well, and we got a lot of questions, and people thought that they were interested to see how we got off the ground and started, and, and will tune in to see how we do. Tomorrow morning, Dr. Constantino is going to be presenting on family engagement at another pre-conference session. And I want to congratulate all of you on your recognition tonight from the Virginia School Boards and appreciate the active role that we've taken there. And I attended a Veterans Day program at Matoka, which was very well done and, and very moving, and I think very appreciated by the veterans. And of course, happy Thanksgiving to everybody as well.
Any other comments from board members? I noticed that we removed the restraining seclusion procedure from the agenda tonight. I know we had a public citizen comment about that.
There were a number, obviously a number of citizen comments, a number of board questions and comments. We, and there was, because of the one-week timeframe between the meetings, we simply haven't had the time to address all those concerns and comments. So we did pull the item and we are prepared, we think we're prepared at the moment to bring that back to you for your review at the December meeting.
Okay, so that will be on our December 15 agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I believe it will be, and, and if for some reason we are unable because we haven't been able to make those conclusions, I'll let the board know, but right now the plan is to bring it back.
Okay, I appreciate that. I appreciate the emphasis on that. I know there was a lot of concern from, from the board and the public on that, and appreciate the, the energy put into that. Upcoming meetings, we have a closed session on December 15th at 6:00 PM in the county complex in Building F. Work session and action items at 6:30 on December 15th, also in Building F. We have a closed session on January 5th at 6 o'clock at Building F, and an organizational meeting on January 5th at 6:30, also in Building F.
You might mention we're going to be at VSBA.
And then we will be at the Virginia School Board Association Conference here in Williamsburg Wednesday, Thursday, and part of Friday. So looking forward to that and talking with colleagues from across the state about issues and concerns that we all have. With that, we will adjourn to personnel session, recess into recess, and then a re, come into session at, or a personnel session.
Will we be coming back out here to?
And we will come back out here to.
Recession.
To adjourn. Yes, yes.